We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Now 6:04 PM. This time we request all cell phones and/or pagers be turned off or put in the silent mode. And also, we ask that you would please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentation portion of the meeting. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. I'd like to make sure that we acknowledge the presence of our student representative for his second visit to the board meeting, Austin Young. Austin's a senior at Estero High School where he's part of the Cambridge Academy and received his Advanced International Certificate of Education, Diploma with Distinction earlier this year. What he enjoys most is being active with his school and community and working with others. Currently, Austin serves as President of the National Honor Society, President of the Debate Club, Chairman of AICE Student Union, Student Council Treasurer, Guitarist for the Varsity Jazz Band, and plays on the Varsity tennis team. His favorite subjects are history and economics, and he's been accepted to the University of Florida and will most likely be attending there this fall. His goals for the future are to become a civil rights and constitutional attorney or perhaps pursue a career in public policy. Austin is passionate about education because learning new things is his number-one source of motivation. We're happy to have you again here tonight.[127.03][127.03](APPLAUSE). And the board majority has given him assignment for tonight, so he will be a participant. There is no extra pay for that.[142.44][142.44](LAUGHTER). I want to make one more announcement, and that is that Mr. Armstrong will not be present with us this evening. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, presentation of colors and Pledge of Allegiance, two recognitions, two resolutions, two acknowledgements, public comment, consent action items, which include three under executive services, ten under business and finance, twelve under operations, four under teaching and learning, one superintendent recommendation, and three items for public hearing, one of which is good cause. Dr. Graham, would you please provide an explanation for the good cause item?
This is a timing issue for one of our charters. We want to approve their contracts so they can begin their construction.
As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. And the last thing is four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mrs. Dozier. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Ms. Fisher will deliver this evening's invocation, after which Mrs. Dozier will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. After the special presentation portion of the agenda, I'm going to call a brief recess to allow those who wish to depart an opportunity to do so. If you'd now please stand and remain standing until the colors are retired.
Lord, we ask you to look upon all gathered here today. Inspire us to embrace our responsibilities and grant us the wisdom to make meaningful and appropriate decisions.
Good evening. I'd like to invite Ms. Rachel Gould, Principal of Mariner Middle School, Mr. Brian Yunos, Mrs. Marler Wondelich, Assistant Principals, and Mr. James Kroll, IB Coordinator at Mariner Middle to please join me at the lectern. On January 10th, 2014, Mariner Middle School received word that they had officially earned the title of Authorized International Baccalaureate World School. An IB World School for the Middle Years Program. Mariner Middle becomes a part of a global community of schools that are committed to developing knowledgeable, caring young people who will be ready to negotiate their futures successfully and to make contributions resulting in a more harmonious and peaceful world. Mariner Middle School is now the home of the first IB Middle Years Program in the The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize and congratulate Mariner Middle School for becoming an authorized IB school.
Thank you to the school board and to Dr. Graham for having us here tonight. And we are so proud. I'm proud of my teachers and students. It's been a long journey, a lot of work, and they rose to the occasion. And come visit us anytime. Check it out.
The Florida High School Thesbian Festival is an exhilarating gathering of the best high school thesbians from across the state. By showcasing student talent, these festivals provide an opportunity to exchange ideas and learning from others. This year, we have split this recognition to be presented at two board meetings due to the high number of students to be recognized and that all high schools involved were able to attend the same board meeting due to prior commitments. Additional students will be recognized at the April 15th school board meeting. The Lee County School District was well-represented at this year's festival, with a large number of students being selected for various awards. I would like to introduce those students, their principals, and their teachers to you. As I call your name, if you would please come forward and line up in front of the board table to have your picture taken with board members and the superintendent. We will take an individual picture of each of the school's group's honorees. And I will start with Island Coast High School. If I could have Principal Kristen Bruno and teacher Christina Kohler, please come forward. Students, Rachel Lord, Melissa Maturro, Brett McKinnon, and Steve Angulo.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Pardon me?
You pronounced it good.
Good. How you doing? Congratulations while they're having their pictures made.[721.12][721.12](APPLAUSE). You know, these students have to be proficient in speaking to a group, and that's not always the easiest thing in the world to do. So these students, when they get up there and perform, it really takes, it takes a lot of not only courage, but it also takes a lot of knowledge to be, to be able to be articulate and to be recognized by your peers. So congratulations, students.[752.51][752.51](APPLAUSE). From Lehigh Senior High, please join me, Principal Jackie Corey, teacher Janelle Lox, students Anthony Sanchez, Amanda Rice, Shakira Hyde, Caitlin Foster, Dylan Levine, Jacqueline Frischesian?
Frischesian.
Frischesian. Excuse me. Jacqueline, where are you? Miss Jacqueline, sorry, Jacqueline. So what you're seeing are the best of the best and the brightest in their ability to get before a group, perform, and articulate their position. Congratulations, students.[807.81][807.81](APPLAUSE). Thank you. Now we will have from Cypress Lake High School Center for the Arts, Principal Tracy Perkins, teacher Jason Loti. Students, Tom Short, Lilly Alexander, Nicholas Parker, Lucas Ackerman, Chloe Hart, Hannah Lunsford, Martina Mazur, Kaylee Staub, Kaylee Ackerson, Haley Bowling, Tricia Gormager, Kiana Jackson, Xavier Maldonado, Garrett Nolan, Brittany Rice, Gabby Rodriguez, Martina Long, Chance Citron, Melanie Arana, Marissa Brooks, Jamie LaCissino, Hannah Popple, Sarah Emily Hall, Les Engelhardt, Holly Wilson, Tyler Carpenter, Sarah Hindrick, Marcus Martins, Melissa Mignard, Abby Webb, Lambert Barnes, Courtney Camerillo, Zachary Homer, Kelly Johnson, Gillian Marino, Tori Omsby, Christian Richardson, Luke Turner, Monty Staub, Jenna Weitzman, Spencer Barney, Alex Linder, Tovee Newworth, Kayla Satori, Haley Ward, Kat Blankenship. They got up here before I called their name, so raise your hand. Joseph Gorrell-Aria-Hartwell, Emma Valencia, Nick Houston, Marissa Zumbo, Melody Cameron, Stephen Harris, Keira Kazezo, I pronounced it incorrectly, I know, and Jessica Wells. Where's that student? Where is, where is, where is Keria? Where are you?
Kiara.
Where's Kiara? Pronounce your last name.
Kazezo.
Kazezo? Boy, Ms. Morgan, we butchered that one. Kazezo, okay. What a handsome-looking group.[974.23][974.23](APPLAUSE). Can you tell this is the Centers for the Arts?
I would like to invite Ms. Jackie Turner, Assistant Director for Exceptional Student Education, Ms. Terri Miles, Learning Resource Specialist for ESE, and Ms. Jessica Duncan, ESE Coordinator, to please join me at the lectern. Autism is a complex developmental disability that typically appears during the first three years of life and affects a person's ability to communicate and interact with others. Autism Speaks, the largest autism science and advocacy organization in the United States, estimates that 67 million people worldwide live with autism, which remains the fastest-growing developmental disability in the world, affecting one out of 88 children. Although there is no cure for autism, recent efforts in early detection and educational intervention have shown encouraging results and have provided a measure of hope to relatives and caretakers of those with autism. Mr. Chairman, in an effort to do our part to raise awareness and to educate the public about autism, I move for the board adoption of the resolution proclaiming the month of April 2014 as National Autism Awareness Month.
Second.
Second. Second by Ms. Dozier. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.[1098.24][1098.24](APPLAUSE).
I would first like to give a big thank you to our school board and our administration for their ongoing support of our students on the autism spectrum. And I'd like to give some updated information. Just last week, the CDC came out with some new information showing a 30% growth in the last two years, with one in 68 persons having an autism spectrum disorder and one in 42 males. The school district of Lee County statistics show exactly the same things. In 2001, I became an autism program specialist, and at that time, we had 20 classrooms serving students on the autism spectrum and very few students in the general curriculum, in the general population. This year, we have 114 classrooms. We have 30 locations dedicated to serving students who are in the general curriculum and general population. We have a new program with paraprofessionals trained to serve those students who are in the general curriculum. We also offer courses toward the autism endorsement for the state of Florida. Again, I just want to thank you for that continued support so we can continue doing what we do best.
I'd like to invite Mr. Rob Stratton, Coordinator for Instructional Technology and Materials in Curriculum Services, to join me at the lectern. Hi, Rob. School Library Month is the annual celebration of school librarians and their programs. First celebrated in April of 1985, this event provides an opportunity to celebrate the essential role that strong school library programs play in a student's educational career. At the inaugural celebration, former Senator Patrick Moynihan told school librarians in his keynote address, "I want to thank you for what you do. I hope you know how important your work is. You change lives for the better. You touch people while they can still be touched." These words are as true today as they were 29 years ago. Effective school library programs help students find, use, and apply information, enabling them to function successfully in school, fulfill their lifelong learning needs, and enhance their reading enjoyment. Lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the library curriculum of elementary and secondary schools. The theme for this year's event is "Lives Change at Your Library." Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the resolution proclaiming the month of April 2014 as School Library Month.
Ms. Dozier, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the school media specialists and the media paraprofessionals, I want to thank the school board and the superintendent for their support of our school libraries. The theme, as Ms. Fisher said, is "Lives Change at Your Libraries." Through books, our students have access to creative stories that expand their imaginations, and they also have access to resources that inform them of the world around them. Our school media staff make this transformation happen every day.
The character word for April is integrity. Adhering steadfastly to a personal sense of honorable and ethical behavior. Integrity is sticking to what you know is right. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Thank you.[1458.32][1458.32](APPLAUSE).
I'd like to ask Mr. David LaRosa, Principal of Fort Myers High School, to come forward, please.
Chairman Scott, the board, Dr. Graham, appreciate you all having us here tonight. Chairman Scott, the board, Dr. Graham, appreciate you all having us here tonight. I'm here to talk about an individual who served this district for a long, long time. She served Fort Myers High School for 39 years. And her name was Ms. Thelma Jeanette Hamilton. And mostly everybody knew her as Ms. Thelma. And just kind of read you a little bit about her, and then I'm going to tell you about the Ms. Thelma that I know. She was born on January 15th, 1931, here in Fort Myers, Florida. She graduated from Dunbar High School and was a member of the cheerleading squad, class of 1949. I never knew she was a cheerleader, so that kind of explains a lot about her.[1543.71][1543.71](LAUGHTER). She attended two years at South Carolina State and became a member of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. So not only was she a cheerleader, she was a sorority girl. Okay? But anyway, she ended up marrying Dr. Edwin Harvey Hamilton, and she was the mother of five children, which some of the, some of her children are with me tonight. Really, that's all I'm going to read to you about her. I can tell you about the person who I knew for quite a long time. But she was the ultimate, ultimate school person. And what I mean about that is, is she truly, truly loved Fort Myers High School, and she loved the kids there, and she loved the staff. And when I went there initially in 2000, she's one of the first people in the school to come up to me and welcome me to the school. And then when I went back there years later as the principal, she came in my office and she kind of told me how I needed to do my job.[1608.65][1608.65](LAUGHTER). I'll be honest with you, I took her serious with every word she said because I knew that she was comparing me to the five predecessors to myself. And knowing those individuals, I knew that I had big shoes to fill. And I never forget, after my first year, I came down here to get my evaluation, and I came back to school and I ran into her, and she said, "Where you been?" And I said, "Well, I went to get my, I went to get my evaluation." And so as I walked away from her, she followed me into my office and she shut the door. And I got my real evaluation at that point.[1649.82][1649.82](LAUGHTER). But you need to understand, she was very wise, and so any time that she talked to you, you really needed to pay attention because the majority of the time, she knew what she was talking about. But she loved the school, she loved the kids, she loved the staff there. I last visited her at Lee Memorial Hospital in December, and the conversation was nothing more than about the individuals that were still at the school. She wanted to know if I was still walking through classrooms. She wanted to know if I was making the kids mine. She wanted to know if the boys were keeping their pants pulled up and not sagging. But that's what the conversation was all about. I always invited her back to luncheons and, and events that we had because she had been part of this school for so long and that she was going to be a part of it forever. But I want to thank you all for allowing me to talk on behalf of her and her family. And for those of you who knew her, knew she was very special, and she's very deserving of this.
At this time, we're going to take a brief recess, so those who wish to leave may do so.
so. Would one of you like to stand up and tell us who you are, where you're from, and why are you here tonight and not home studying where?
Go to the mic.
We're from Group Eighteen in Gateway. We're based in Gateway Trinity Lutheran Church. We're here to just, to complete a rank requirement, to attend a meeting of the school board.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good to have you here. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please address public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity, at this point in the meeting, to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda, or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'd be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Mr. Scott, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room, and include the requirement that each speaker wishes to address the school board. To endorse the purchase of a product or service in which a speaker has a personal interest, the speaker must reveal that interest before making comment to the board. Speakers are reminded to confine their remarks to educationally relevant issues. Personal attacks on individuals and abusive comments will not be allowed. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers, or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes. Mr. Scott, I have two cards this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the right side who did not fill out a card that wishes to speak? Mr. Castellano, on the left side. Please call the first card.
First speaker is Mr. Kevin Regal.
Evening, school board members and members of the community. I wanted to bring to your attention a few things here. And as an advocate, as a teacher, as a taxpayer, one of my concerns is the safety of the students and their educational well-being. And so not to call out anybody by name, we'll just go ahead and say employee and administration. One of the concerns is, there was an employee at Lehigh Senior High who, after the fact, was caught and arrested for three felony counts of pedophilia action. But before this, as a matter of public record, in the year prior to coming to my swim meets when I was a coach, and being sent out to other sporting events, this person was charged with misdemeanors in the year prior for battery touch or strike, a misdemeanor first degree, also disorderly and toxic public place. My concern is this. I had notified administration at Lehigh Senior High, so I know personally about this. And one of the matters was, after the fact, this person was put in place as an interim soccer coach for a few weeks. That is, how was that decision made? And if I was a parent of these soccer players, I would be appalled to find this out. I know this because I had worked there. And this is a matter of public record. Number two, another concern I have is a paraprofessional who had signed a contract as a paraprofessional. She had shown me this contract, was put in place to teach at Lehigh, 100 algebra students for a period of four months. She was not a certified teacher. Some of the things that she showed me were actually her proof. So she had made a comment about not being paid as a regular teacher. I saw this firsthand. I looked it up with the FLDOE. My concern is, as a special educator, as a person who teaches special ed, as a person who's certified in math, that these students did not pass the algebra end of course exam, many of them failed, because administration put her in and removed the teacher who was a certified teacher. So as a parent, you know, one of my, you know, a question that these parents should have is, why was this allowed? Why was a person who was not a certified teacher until, actually, July of 2013 on a non-renewable, not in 2012, allowed to be put in this position? And why was nothing done about it now that it's been brought forward? And her initial signed certificate with the school district or contract was as a paraprofessional. My third and final thing was, a matter was brought to me about an individual who had gotten a DUI. Now, he was driving around, the cross-country students at Lehigh Senior High. This all happened in the same time period in 2012, in the matter of about six to eight months.
Thank you, Mr. Regal. Your time is up, sir.
Okay.
Next speaker is Mr. Anthony Thomas.
Members of the board, Madam Superintendent, Mr. Martin. My name's Anthony Thomas. I'm here today to talk about a lady who was very remarkable, somebody who touched me. I graduated from Fort Myers High in 2002, and I knew Ms. Thelma. I used to go in the clinic all the time and speak with her. There were four people at Fort Myers High who made an invaluable mark on my life. Frank Seriani, Ms. Thelma, and some other, my mind just, the other two escape me right now. Ms. Booker, I love Ms. Booker. And Dr. Browder. Those were four people who I just really liked a lot and made a tremendous impact on my life. I want to say I'm very proud of this school district, with the love they've shown one of their employees. They were very gracious and allowed Ms. Thelma to have her funeral service at Fort Myers High School auditorium. As the principal stated, five of the living six principals that she served under attended her funeral along with Mrs. Fisher. Jim Browder came back into town, and boy, he brought the house down, Mrs. Dozier. I know you were in Tallahassee on your way back, but Dr. Browder, boy, he was good. I want to thank the chairman for attending her wake, and the superintendent for also attending her wake. I want to tell you about Ms. Thelma. When she died, there was so much an outpour in this community here in southwest Florida. Brian Hamel, our Vice Chairman of Lee County Commission, spearheaded a resolution in her honor. Matt Caldwell, our state representative, got the Florida House to pass a resolution in her honor. And Mayor Henderson really stepped up. His wife actually is a graduate of Fort Myers High. And Mayor Henderson, who I don't normally agree with a lot, stepped up and did a proclamation in her honor as well. So I just want you to know that you have some outstanding people that work for this district, and they touch the lives of students. And I was just so pleased to have Ms. Thelma in my life for the few years that I attended Fort Myers High. And I want to just say about a resolution, I see there wasn't a resolution here today, but I would just say to the superintendent, the chairman, in the future, anytime you have an employee, and I know you have a lot of employees in the district, but anytime you have any employee, whether they're a principal owned down to the janitor, who dedicate 40 years of service, you ought to honor them with a resolution. And I don't care who it is, but that just ought to be something where we can take a moment at a board meeting to honor your employees who have given such a long time of service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Dr. Graham and board members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I want to talk about something fun. TALC, Teachers Association of Lee County, by the way, I'm Mark Castellano, President of the Teachers Association of Lee County, forgot that part. Each year, TALC offers scholarships to senior students of our members through an application process. We have traditionally offered two scholarships. We're trying to do more. So one of the things we came up with was to conduct our own 5K run, to try and raise funds for that. As you know, fitness has become, and health has become, an issue for me in the last few years, and a good thing. And so we, a group of us have been doing a lot of 5Ks. We decided we're going to host our own. So we put together the TALC Dollars for Scholars 5K, which is going to be run this Saturday at Rotary Park in South Cape Coral. And I strongly encourage everyone here to come out to that. I want to thank Amity Chandler and Heather Parker for helping us promote this. It went out in last Friday's district news and notes. Really appreciative of that, appreciative of that. And I want to thank Dr. Atkins, who's going to be there Saturday supporting us, just for no other reason than to get me off his back. Looking at him for months. So that's great. I want to invite everyone here that's here tonight, or anyone that's watching this on TV, to please go to 3Dracinginc.com or active.com, 3Dracing.com or active.com, and register. Look for the Dollars for Scholars 5K. It'll be this Saturday at 7:00 PM at Rotary Park in South Cape Coral. You can also go to the Run Shop, 1407 Cape Coral Parkway East, and register there. But we certainly encourage everyone to join us at that for a very worthy cause. Thank you very much.
7:00 PM?
7:00.
Next item on the agenda is approval of action items on the agenda under consent. First, I'll ask if there are any items that board members wish to pull. Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls this evening.
Mrs. Dozier?
Only have 104 tonight.
You'd like to start naming them off?
I'm kidding.
Mrs. Morgan? I have none either. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries 4-0. We'll move now to superintendent recommendations. Dr. Graham, item 6B.
Before we do that, I'd like to introduce some people you just approved. Trying to get better at doing that when I'm supposed to. First of all, Lisa Wright is our Adult and Career Ed Coordinator for Health Occupations. Tony Washington Knight, from tech specialist to new assistant principal at Fort Myers Middle Academy.
Wow, that was impressive.
And Beth Geddy, who's gone, I'm sorry, Tony went from math coach to assistant principal. Beth Geddy at Mariner High has gone from tech specialist to assistant principal. That's right over there. Good to see new administrators smiling. Mariner High teacher to Ida S. Baker High Assistant Principal, James Yandoli. And that's it for tonight. So welcome, and thank you.
Can I say something?
You may.
James, I remember you driving back and forth in my car when you were a Calusa Cougar, and I'm very glad to see that you're a bulldog now. Congratulations.
6B, approval to increase the estimated expenditure for Piggyback Collier County Schools bid number 224-6/07 for the purchase of automotive bus parts and service awarded to multiple vendors from July 30, 2013 through June 30, 2014 by $200,000, for a total estimated annual expenditure of $650,000 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries 4-0. We move now to public hearing. Dr. Graham, I'd ask you to present your recommendation for this evening's public hearing.
A, approval of the adoption of the proposed revision of school board policy 1.18, Community Involvement Opportunities, to establish staggered two-year terms for the membership of board advisory committees. The effective date shall be April 2, 2014. Approval of the adoption of the proposed revision of school board policy 6.05, Investment of Funds, to set forth the investment objectives and parameters for the management of public funds of the district. The effective date shall be April 2, 2014. Approval of this contract with Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee County Campus, Inc., for a grades 912 school to be called Island Park High School, designed to provide students who have dropped out or at risk to drop out with a non-traditional learning environment in which they're able to earn a high school diploma and be prepared for post-secondary success. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents.
We'll now recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider revision of school board policy 1.18, Community Involvement Opportunities, revision of school board policy 6.05, Investment of Funds, and contract for charter school with Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee County Campus. At this time, the public is invited to speak on these three items only. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right who wishes to speak? I see two hands. And on the left side. Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, I want to speak about the issue dealing with the adoption of the Community Involvement Opportunities for, I agree with having it for two years, but I'd like to tell the board, I had a meeting not too long ago with an icon here in southwest Florida, Ms. Margaret Seriani. She's served on the school board for many years. And one of the things, Ms. Margaret, she says, "Anthony, I love your idea for these two minority advisory boards to get some input from our minority community. The problem with the board," she said, "is that on all of the advisory boards that they currently have, they don't get any input from them, because they don't ask them anything to give them input on." So while it may be good to make these terms to be only two years, I think you need fundamental reform to your advisory boards. These advisory boards, I know, I live in a city, Tom works for the city of Fort Myers, Mary lives in the city, Jeanne lives in Fort Myers. I get to watch my city advisory boards on television. I get to see what they're doing, what they're talking about, what they're voting on. So, Mr. Chairman, if you're going to have some more reform, not only limiting the amount of term, or the two-year term, but you need to allow some better reform. You need to allow these boards to meet on television. We have this big diocese boards, each one of you get three members, 15-member boards, they can sit here, and we can see what's going on, especially the construction committee. That's a very important committee. They're making recommendations to you all about building schools in different areas. And I know, before Tom came on the board, he and I talked about it, they didn't even record the meetings until Tom said, "Where are the minutes?" And finally, they started recording, and Tom got a copy of the recording of the thing. So we just need some more transparency in our government, I think, and I still am not going to give up on the idea of having the two minority advisory boards. I believe that's important. But one thing about America and Lee County, we have an election coming up. So what this board won't give us, maybe the next board will. We've got to exercise our right to vote and be informed. This is putting us on the pathway to be informed by having these people serve for two years, not binding the hand of future boards, and as far as who they get to pick. But I would just really urge you, Mr. Chairman, to look at further reform to your advisory boards. Thank you.
Chair, see you. Chair, see you. Mark fooled me with that quick move there.
[laughing]
I would just like to ask the Superintendent for clarification on that with regard to the community advisory board as it's going to read. I mean, I have no problem with that. I know a lot of members, but it's very hard to get members to serve on these committees. So, I think I'd like to hear how it's going to read. Do you have it?
You want to just hear the recommendation again?
Yes, I'd be happy to read that if you'd like to. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Give me just a moment. The revision is limited only to one paragraph in the policy, and it provides that for school year 2014-15, eight of the members of the finance curriculum, Construction and Continuous Systemic Improvement Advisory Committee shall be appointed to one-year terms. For each of the four committees, two of the members nominated by the district, one, two, and three school board members shall be appointed to one-year terms. One of the members nominated by the district, four, and five school board members shall be appointed to one-year terms. All other members shall be appointed to two-year terms. This provision of the policy shall be removed after the 2014-15 school year. That is the revision.
I'll now close the public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of April 1. Dr. Graham, please restate your recommendations for this evening's public hearing items.
The adoption of the proposed revision of School Board Policy 1.18, Community Involvement Opportunities to Establish Staggered Two-Year Terms for the Membership of Board Advisory Committees. The effective date shall be April 2, 2014.
You've heard the Superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Fisher. Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
I am going to support this because my colleagues have, we've talked about it, we've workshopped it, and I understand the rationale behind it, but I'm not real sure that I totally agree with this. And I think I voiced that at the workshop that we had, this, that. But in the sense of working with my colleagues, I will support it this evening. But I do agree with Ms. Chair Seiya that we do have a situation where we, I know a lot of times we can't get people to come up. I know we, I wrote a letter once, put it in the news press, and I will do it again next year, encouraging people, you know, letting them know when the time is where they can get their applications and so forth. And even then, we have to maybe contact people and ask people to serve on the committees. You know, they say that a lot of times you don't hear from people unless they're dissatisfied. So, maybe that's why a lot of people are not, you know, they're happy with the way things are going. But I agree also with Mr. Thomas, and I agree with Ms. Sariani, that, and I've said this, we have got to give the committees a reason for being there. We can't just simply have them meet once a month and not be able to bring us some kind of recommendations that we don't act on. If we think that they're, if they're important enough for us to have a meeting, have an advisory committee, we need to give them something to work on, and then they bring it back to us. I know that the CSI committee, I know that they worked very, very strongly with the recent accreditation report. I know they reviewed it up in different segments over several months of time, and they felt like they were doing something worthwhile. That's what we have to do with every single committee. Every committee has got to have a feeling that what they're doing is very, very important. It's good work, and we are looking at and listening and considering the work that they do. I know the Curriculum Committee has had a lot of meetings, made a lot of good recommendations that we've actually followed through here on this Board. The advisory, the Construction Advisory Committee makes a lot of million-dollar decisions, and they bring recommendations to the Board. We've, you know, we've listened to some of their recommendations. I think that every committee has to have a purpose for being there. And as long as you have a purpose, and I also agree that maybe if they're televised, it might also generate some interest. I think that's a great idea. In fact, when you recommended that once before I brought that up, I will be supporting this this evening, but I certainly hope that we can generate additional interest in our committees.
Other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Item B, please.
Approval of the adoption of the proposed revision of School Board Policy 6.05 Investment of Funds to Set For The Investment Objectives and Parameters for the Management of Public Funds of the District. The effective date shall be April 2, 2014.
You've heard the Superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Ms. Dozier. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Item C, please.
Approval of contract with Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee County Campus, Inc., for a grades 9-12 school to be called Island Park High School, designed to provide students who have dropped out or at risk to drop out with a non-traditional learning environment in which they're able to earn a high school diploma and be prepared for post-secondary success. Approval authorizes the Superintendent to execute related documents.
You've heard the Superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mrs. Dozier. Discussion? Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I would just like clarification. We have had a question from the public about the location of, the site of this school. By executing this contract, do we bind ourselves in terms of the location, or are we not in a position to do anything?
I'll be happy to address that. The statute with respect to charter schools provides that the school is required to submit proof of ownership or lease of an appropriate facility for the school 15 days in advance of the opening of the school. This particular school has gotten ahead of that requirement. They've already provided us information with respect to their proposed location. It has been reviewed. There were initially some concerns about the location, but it has been fully reviewed at this point, and the location is in compliance with statute and with the local ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Move to other business and Board member comments. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I just have a few things. Again, welcome to our new administrators. Now the hard work begins. We expect a lot. I want to congratulate the Cape Coral High School cheerleaders, who will be at the midpoint bridge on April 12, paying people's tolls, spreading random acts of kindness, and encouraging travelers to pay it forward. Fort Myers High School is collecting new and used bands, instruments for their festival trip to Freeport, the Bahamas. You still have time to donate. Congratulations to our Communications Department for the district and community news, for telling the story, and for introducing our brand-new app today. It's a very exciting day. You've really kicked us up a notch and taken us to the next level. I want to thank Mrs. Morgan for her information that she gathered on school boards and data and the meaningful information that it provided. Friday evening is the Golden Apple Banquet. I want to congratulate the winners of the Golden Apple. Well, Friday, it's next Friday, the 11th, I'm sorry, but we won't have another meeting. I want to congratulate them and thank the foundation for their support and the community for making it possible for us to recognize the best in those who represent our wonderful staff who work hard every day, making a difference in the lives of kids. I would like to, at this moment, thank Austin for being with us the last two meetings. We really appreciate your input, and I look forward to more conversation with you that started this evening. Thank you. Oh, I forgot one thing. The Future of Art is going to be exhibited at the Alliance of the Arts from April 2 through the 25th. So, please take an opportunity to go and see the talent that our students have, and it will be displayed there. It's really amazing. Thank you.
Dozier?
Yes, thank you. And I won't go over a lot of the things. Congratulations to everyone that was appointed to administrative positions this evening. And Mrs. Morgan, I read this, and I pulled this out to bring to the board meeting, this memo that you gave to us that, and the materials that you supplied with it. And I appreciate the fact that you are trying to get us to be analyzing the data instead of just collecting data. And I agree that we need to do that. And I think a lot of the conversations that we are beginning to have here at the table, just like today with the app, we basically had a conversation about how we could analyze the data that she gave us today. So, thank you for keeping, you know, it seems like everybody championed something, and I appreciate the fact that you're championing that. Also, I was so excited about the app today. I got to talk just a minute about it because Mrs., when Mrs. Fisher, when you went into it, you didn't, you didn't, you just talked about it. You didn't get quite as excited as I did today.
You know, I was leaving that to you.
She kept herself composed. I almost got giddy this afternoon because students, high school students, Boy Scouts of America, you better look out. Talk about Big Brother looking. Mom and Dad are going to be looking now. I mean, this new app, the parents can track every class that you're in, whether you're there on time, whether you're there, whether you're not there, what your grades are, what's going on at school. It's going to be amazing. And you may not think so, but we all think as parents and everything that it's going to be absolutely wonderful. And it's just, it's just a great way for parents to communicate. And I know parents out there, it's, I think the app right now is in the black. You can't get it on your phone, but it doesn't cost anything. It's free. It's a way to communicate constantly with the school district. We're right on there. You can email us. You can email the Superintendent. So, as soon as that app is up and ready, just keep checking apps to see if it's available. And, but it's the Lee County School District app. I am more excited about this than anything that I've been excited about in a long time. I'm just real excited about it. I think it's going to do so much for this district. Just, I'm not going to belabor the point because I gave a report this afternoon, but Mrs. Morgan and I were in Tallahassee a couple of weeks ago, and we were traipsing around the Capitol floors, and we were doing good work. And the good work that we were doing was trying to bring additional funding down to Lee County. And I do have to applaud our legislative delegation because our legislative delegation was very receptive and had an open mind and open ears to some of the things. And the questions that they were asking were questions like, "Well, how can we fix that? What kind of language can we put in there that will help you?" And not only did it, some of it relate to funding, but it also related to, like, the textbook issue, which would have actually been a tremendous issue had that actually gone through the way that they had planned, was to eliminate the textbook adoption process and the textbook warehouse. And, but now, it's, we're going to maintain something like that. And them listening to us, how it was critical, how it could hurt us, and, you know, for them to have an open mind to listen to us is a very good thing. So, I just, I thank them. I think that we've got a good group of legislators that are open to ideas, and they also are coming up with ideas that can specifically help Lee County. So, I just, I applaud them, and I thank them for the work that they're doing, and I know the work that they're doing in Tallahassee is, it's very, very arduous work, and the fact that they are willing to do it, they need to be applauded for that. So, I thank them. And that's all.
Mrs. Morgan?
I also would like to acknowledge the Scouts. Thank you very much for being here. It's nice to have a reminder of why we're here and our purpose. I also want to thank Austin. I look forward to seeing you back here as a civil rights advocate, attorney, or a public policy advocate, maybe, after you've sat through a couple of these meetings. But anyway, it's been great having you here. Thank you very much. I will echo Mrs. Dozier's comments about the legislature, our legislators. I think they are, they're, several of them are very new. They're very receptive. They're very open. They listen. They do, they ask questions. And I also would like to take the opportunity to compliment the staff because Mr. Sarah, who represents us in Tallahassee, is effusive in his praise of Dr. Graham and her staff, the speed with which they respond to his requests for data that support the letters and the conversations he has with key legislators on issues. So, the staff here is also playing a very important role, and we appreciate that. I don't have much to talk about. I just wanted to mention that I was at Early Head Start Policy Council last week, and they are working with the Early Learning Coalition to together get a grant that would increase access for pre-K students and would improve the quality of early childhood services. And I mention it only because I like to advocate, or I like to acknowledge, community groups working together because I think when we don't, when we combine our resources and our efforts, we get a lot more out of it than when we try to do it on our own. So, I look forward to hearing about their success. And finally, I would like to say to the Board that I think at some point we have to have a conversation about the accreditation and about the recommendations made by the accreditors with respect to the Board. And I think we should prepare to have a workshop or something to that effect.
Absolutely.
So, that's, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Scott, I have one additional thing. Do you mind?
I don't know whether you were waving at me or Austin or what.
One more little thing. I wanted to thank Austin also, but also, I wanted to say, you know, we, y'all are only getting to come to two meetings. But I had a conversation with somebody today, and they said, "Are y'all planning on doing this over the summer?" Well, you know, that's a question that I don't think we've decided on, and I think if the students are willing and the students want to, when you have your meeting, I don't know how the Board feels about it, but I like having our students here because every time one of them here, they bring us information, and I just appreciate it. And if they want to come up with a schedule or something, that would be my preference, would be to continue to have them over the summer.
Well, we have, we have two juniors on the committee, so if the senior, we have another meeting with them, we have two more meetings, actually. We'll talk to them, if that's the will of the whole Board.
That's fine with me. That would be great if they come.
I'd do as well.
That's all.
Okay. Chair.
Thank you. I have some announcements from around our district, from our latest student superintendent Advisory Council meeting. This is drama season, and the band and all the art departments are having their concerts and plays all across our district. So, I'll just give you a few, a few of the times for those, for all the different schools. So, maybe if you want to see one, that would be great. The Prism Concert at Fort Myers High School is May 1 and 2. Bonnie and Clyde is being performed at Island Coast on the 27th and the 26th. Shrek at North Fort Myers is the 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th of April. Sweeney Todd at Lee High will be performed April 16 through the 19. Cypress has a bunch. They are the art school. The Dance Spring Concert will be the 24th and the 25th. They're having a Relay for Life event also at Hammond Stadium. They'll be participating in the 11th and 12th. That's Cypress. And a performance they call Beans and Scenes will be held on the 4th and 5th of April, also at Cypress, Cypress High School. Astero, my school's Prism Concert is currently scheduled for April 15 at, or, excuse me, May 15 at 7:00 PM. And don't miss out on Fools, which is a play by our drama concert, or our drama, drama department, on April 9, 10, and 11 at Astero High School. We all go out and love to support the sporting events and everything, and the arts are also open to everybody. Most of these tickets are $5, something like that, at about 7 o'clock. And so, whatever school of those is in your area, I'd highly recommend go seeing some of our arts performances. They're really, really awesome. And as this is my last meeting, sitting here with the Board, I'd just like to say that it has been an experience that has taught me so much about how decisions are made in our district, and it's one that I'm very our district and it's one that I'm very thankful for. I'd like to point out that I'm here because, like I mentioned, I sit on the stu, on the superintendent's Student Advisory Council, which is a group of one student representative from each public school. And you, even though we don't always say that much when we sit up on the board, I'd just like to say that all the students that have sat here and those that are to co, that are to come are having lively and productive conversations in our regular meetings with the superintendent and sometimes some of the board. And just today, we are voicing our opinions on both in-school suspension and dress code. And this is a way that a lot of student, student voice is being projected directly to the leaders at our district. And so there's definitely a lot of conversation going on there. I'd just like to say once again, I've learned so much and I'd like to sincerely thank the board and the superintendent for giving us students a chance to be a part of this district school institution. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We've enjoyed having you here and your thoughtful input at the end of the meetings. I have a, I want to relate a meeting that Dr. Graham and I attended on March the 20th with Commissioner Kiker and County Manager De Jarrel. Mr. Kiker and I had a meeting that I had requested back in January to open up a dialogue and this was a follow-up to that. And when the call came from him to us to set up the meeting, we basically went in and allowed him to establish what the meeting agenda was, just to see where they were coming from. And I will tell you that things change slowly, but I think there's a change in, in the way they're looking at the relationship between the county government and the school district. And they understand that we are all in this same canoe and we need to be paddling in the same direction. We talked about our budget, their budget, the impact of the current capital situation on us. And I think that was the bulk of the conversation. And when we were done, it was almost like an aha moment for them that they, they saw the depth of the problem that we're facing. Then it got to be a discussion about what some of the alternatives might be in order to help us out through the county level. They have a realistic understanding of how some of the decisions they make impact the school district. And likewise, I think we got a better understanding of sometimes how our decisions impact the county because we are in this thing together. We had discussion about essential functions and that's really a key issue for them. And it's been one for us for a couple of years. What are the essential things we have to do? And if they aren't essential for our mission, then we've got to come to hard decisions. And they have to come to hard decisions about whether they continue or they don't continue. We talked about accountability and the impact of those decisions that come down from Tallahassee, from the Department of Education to us and how that in turn impacts the county. We had discussion about the reservation of land on new developments. And I think the story was at the staff level, lower staff levels, oh, we can give that up, we don't need that. But when it came to his level and the manager's level, they understood how critically important that is as we get into a new growth phase. I think the thing that struck me most was Commissioner Kiker's willingness to relook at the impact fee situation, knowing that that's not going to cure all of our ills, but it would certainly help us in the right direction. He has some innovative thoughts about impact fees and relationship of impact fees to property value, not just a flat fee regardless of value. And he wants to pursue that a little bit further and investigate to see if there are some other options that we can come up with. We agreed we were going to meet with more frequency and that the manager and superintendent would meet on more operational issues with greater frequency, but that the four of us would get back together when some things bubbled up and we needed to have both the commission and the board more informed about some of the things that were affecting them. When we had our conversation this afternoon about the apps, it struck me that we both felt that we had to do a better job of telling our story. And when you look at the app, applications, there is a great opportunity within that to tell our story more effectively. And they feel that way about what they have to say and what we have to say. And when you look at the power and influence of county government and the school district on the entire community, it is immense. And if we link arms, the chances are we're going to be better when it comes to employment, investment, and all the things that make the community work effectively. When it was all over with, I don't know who it was that said it, it might have been the Lord speaking to us all from a air handler or something. But there was commonality between the district and the county. We were both concerned about growth and managing the growth effectively. That we're both concerned about having good research and analyzing it properly to see where we ought to go. We both have a clear understanding of our impacts on the economy in the local area and that we both know we can impact the economic development going forward. So all in all, I think it was a very positive meeting. I saw signs that things were changing and that there is room for cooperation and we intend to keep pushing that little crack open further and further as time goes by. One other thing I want to remind people of is that next, the 9th, I think, what is that, a Thursday?
No, Wednesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, next Wednesday, in this room, there will be a congressional debate between the candidates for representative replacing Mr. Radell. We will have two students on the panel of questioners along with all of the local news people. It will be televised and it will be recorded and rebroadcast on Wink, but it will take place in this room. So first come, first served for a seat. Elbow your way in. I hope we have to open the back of the room up because there's that much interest in it. But this will be, they have a guarantee that all of the candidates, the active candidates will be here. So could be very, very interesting. Mr. Martin, do you have any attorney comments tonight?
None this evening, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Graham?
Just a few. I just want some clarification. The workshop about accreditation, do you want me to find a date or put it?
Yeah, that would be my request, is that you find a date for it.
We have really two issues. One is the district ish, you know, the, the recommendations that impacted the, the fourth and fifth recommendation impacted the whole district.
Right.
And we need to talk about that. But we also need to talk specifically about the recommendations made about the board.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we want to do the both at the same time.
Well, I, to be honest, I would like some time for the other two to craft some, a plan and some recommend, because we, we pretty much gave them those when we gave them our opportunities for improvement. So if you want a workshop just about what you all, how you want to proceed. I, I can't remember what's on the workshop on the 15th, which is why I'm wondering if we can do it then or if we need it on another date. But I'll look, I just want to know, you want me to figure out when to do that, is what I'm asking.
Yes, and I would think sooner rather than later.
Gotcha.
We have an executive session on the 15th and, and I think it's imperative that we sit down and talk and make a plan.
We can't do that in executive session.
No, no, I'm just saying, I was just mentioning that we have an executive session.
We have a workshop on the 15th. I just need to see what's on the agenda. Yeah. And see if it's already full. I can't, I know budget's on there, but I'm not sure if there's anything else, so we'll look at that. Okay. I was in Tallahassee last week. It's a fascinating place, but we do have legislators that are working for us and the School Boards Association and the Superintendent's Association as well. We, just for the community, if they don't know, we talk to our lobbyist every Monday and he gives us an update. And things change from day to day and some things are, the wind is blowing our way in some cases and in other ways we have concerns. So I tweeted sometime last week, the, the sites where people can follow along. And it's, it's worth time to follow along and see what's happening with our legislators. It's important we pay attention. I forgot to put on the calendar I sent you all today, but I am speaking to the League of Women Voters on Saturday. And the app that everybody's talking about, we're very excited. It'll be out soon. We have some details to work through. We do have a great story to tell and it will help us tell our story. And Mrs. Dozier talked a lot about what parents will be able to do and what kids probably won't be able to do as a result of the app. But I also want to just stress that it will be an app that's available to community members, whether they have children or not. It's, it's going to be a great way to know what's happening in the school district. I also wanted to tell you in, in light of conversations that we had earlier this year about charter school application process, we have scheduled a meeting on Thursday, April 17th, for anyone who is interested in applying for a charter school in our district to explain the Florida model to them and the application and all the things that go with that. It will include, it's scheduled for two hours and it will include a question-answer period. There's information about the meeting on our website and we're, we're advertising it so people know it's happening. It's on April 17th from 3:00 to 5:00 and it's open to the public. Nobody has to sign up in advance, but anybody interested in a charter school, we want to be sure that they attend that meeting. All County Jazz Band is at Island Coast on Friday. And probably the most exciting thing, while I was in Tallahassee, I got a, and I almost didn't answer the phone because I didn't recognize the number, but we happened to be on a break and I, so I said Nancy Graham. And it was the Commissioner of Education, so I'm glad I answered the phone. And she was calling to tell me that she had just called Bay Shore Elementary to tell the principal that James Lefco, our Support Person of the Year, is now in the top five finalists.
Wow.
As the Support Person of the Year. And that ceremony will take place, this is kind of, I don't get it, but it's going to take place at Legoland on April 25th. And so he will be there and recognized as one of the top five and who knows, maybe he'll even win. So we are very, very excited for Bay Shore and for James. That's, that's just awesome. And I think that's everything. I just want to remind students and parents, it's fourth quarter. And I want to say to staff, thank you because fourth quarter is the hardest quarter of all. Everybody's weary and there's still a lot left to do and everybody knows that. At the same time, I just want to encourage everybody, it's the final stretch and please, please finish strong. Continue to be grateful to serve as the leader of this district.
The next scheduled meeting of the board is April 15th, a special meeting at 2:00, immediately followed by the school board workshop and the board action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business to come before the body, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mrs. Dozier. All in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it.